Hello ladies and gentlemen, you're watching the Grant County, West Virginia Matrix Show. I'm your host Brian Shreve. It's been awhile since I've been on, been laying low, working on some other projects since the election. I'd like to thank everyone that voted for me, the 484 people that voted for me. That was a pretty big deal for me, I knew I wasn't gonna win, but to get 484 votes, that's 13%. That's pretty damn good in my opinion. Back during the Revolutionary War, it was between 3 and 5% of the people that participated. So I got 13% of the vote in Grant County. I'd say some people are waking up, that's what I like to see. Can't win all the battles, but if we can win the big one in the end, that's the one that matters. So, I'm very proud of what I've done, a lot of people thought maybe I was upset or whatever. I'm very happy about it, that was a big step for me. I think anybody that wants to run for anything, needs to step up the plate and run. It's not that complicated, they try to make it look like it's complicated to scare you from running, so that they could put in their ringers. It's not that hard, a little bit of paperwork, a little bit of common sense. If you don't know an answer, ask the questions. They'll help you, if they don't, go to somebody else, or tell them it's their job to help you. It's that simple. Running for office was one of the most entertaining things I ever done. I'm not gonna lie to you, it was very entertaining on one hand. On the other hand, it was very sad, to see how dumb down people have become. I hate to say that, I don't mean to say it in a mean way, but it is the fact, people have been dumb down. I have several stories I could tell, I'll tell a few, things that went on. I had a guy come up to me, said he liked me, but he couldn't vote for me. I'm like, "Why not?" He said, "Well, I can't vote for a Mormon." I looked at him, I said, "I'm not a Mormon." So the question I have is, how many other people heard that I was a Mormon? And me personally, I don't have a problem with Mormons, I believe in freedom of religion. They believe whatever they want to believe, I don't care, it's none of my business. But to say that someone's a Mormon that's running for public office, I would say that probably cost me some votes, because there's a lot of people out there that have a bad opinion towards Mormons. Just saying. I mean, that's one example of the dumbing down of America. Where did that even come from? I've never even been to a Mormon church, studied with a Mormon or anything like that. There's no evidence whatsoever to support that. Somebody concocted that, and that's how rumors get started, get spread around. And how can you compete against that in an election? It's impossible. Then there's my campaign slogan. "Take a stand against tyranny." I thought that was cool, I thought that was a damn good campaign slogan. I was wrong, I'll admit I was wrong. I had people come up to me, ask me what tyranny means. First off, everybody that's went to school should know what tyranny means. Anybody who knows anything about the history of our country, should know what tyranny means. They couldn't even pronounce it right. Asking me what tyranny means. I had one person come up to me, and ask me why I was taking a stand against trannies. I don't know about that one. It's sad how dumb down the voters have become. I mean, I'm not saying I'm the sharpest tack in the box, but damn. Anyhow, enough of that, just thank you to everyone that voted for me and supported me and all that good stuff. I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Commissioner Miley's family and friends on getting him elected. They put a lot of hard work into getting him elected, putting up his signs for him and stuff, going out and talking to everybody and campaigning for him. They put a lot of hard work into that, and I congratulate them for that. Moving on, a lot of catching up to do, it's been awhile. I've been trying to start my own business, Shreve's Wildlife Taxidermy. It's a new adventure for me, something to do, make a little extra money, maybe I can get out of factory one day. That factory worker will kill you. If this don't kill me first. Alright, moving on, I'm gonna pick on the county commissioners in this episode. I just, they're so much fun to pick on, I mean, they leave the door wide open for people like me and a few others, to really drive the nail in their coffin. You would think they would cover their butts a little bit better, but they don't seem to be too bright. I'm not able to go to the meetings, because I work day shift, you know? And anybody who works day shift, don't get the opportunities to participate in government functions. We pay our taxes though, so that they can function, but we don't have no say in anything. That's a whole nother topic, I don't feel like beating a dead horse right now on that. So I have to resort to alternatives, to find out what goes on in the meetings. And in this case, I use the Grant County, West Virginia Observer on Facebook. Yeah, I know me and Jill don't have the best of relations, but in this case, I think she's done a really good job with this page she has on there. She's very thorough, from what I understand, she records the meetings, and then types in what all was said, uses their names or their initials, so you know who's speaking. She's very thorough on this, and I think she hit the ball out of the park on this one. So I'll give her a round of applause for this, and I thank her for doing it, because this enables me to see what's going on, and anybody else that wants to see what's going on, that's unable to get into the meetings. Moving on. This is from, I guess, the December 27th meeting. Jane Kite Killian was in there talking about transparency. Talking about the minutes, the minutes are not accurate, and not to read the whole thing, you can go read it for yourself. Anyhow, she's talking about the minutes not being accurate, and how this is a record for the history of the county for 100 years from now. You know, these minutes can be used in court or anything, I mean, they should be accurate. In Doug Swick's comment, after she cornered him, he says, "I'm glad you picked out the grammatical errors, you were a former English teacher, and I'm a mechanic." I have an issue with this. He's been in there 10 years, his second term, and he's using the excuse that he's a mechanic for his screw-up. Now, I could agree with that if it was like his first year in office, but after that, you know, you've got to stand on your own two feet. He's a commissioner, he should not be using the fact that he is a mechanic as an excuse. You know, I work at Woodmark. Let's say I'm on a saw, I'm running the saw, I'm cutting some pieces of wood. I cut a bunch of pieces the wrong size. My supervisor comes to me and questions me about it. "Brian, why did you cut all these pieces the wrong size? You messed up, you made a mistake." How well would things go over, if I looked at my supervisor and said, "Oh, I'm just a mechanic." Been there 17 years. I don't think that excuse would work, it would probably get me in some trouble. It would be very disrespectful for me to say that to my supervisor too. If for Commissioner Swick, to use the excuse that he's a mechanic for his screw-up, because he can't tell the difference between mister and misses and stuff like that, that's downright disrespectful and ignorant, and it's uncalled for. I expect more out of an elected official. You know, I was accused of having horrendous professionalism, and then he uses an excuse like that for his screw-up? I mean, come on, this guy's a joke, he's a gimmick, I don't care much for him. Moving on. This is a good one. This is from part 2, January 22nd. There was an issue during the early voting, like the first day, and part of the second day, the ballots wasn't being signed. So they had to take those votes, ballots, and lock them up. I'll get into the whole story about that here in a little bit. Anyhow, they're at this meeting, and... Looks like Jane Kite was asking some questions. Doug Swick here, "Well, when they came to the meeting, everybody was here except, were they all here?" Fisher, "They were all here." Jane Kite, "What was the timeframe? Maybe I'll make it easy for you, when did you find out? When were they called? And when was this big meeting?" And when she asked when were they called, they, meaning the candidates, which was one of me. And Doug Swick's answer is, "I don't know." Well, he was at that meeting, I sat right there and seen him. I got 2015 vision in both eyes, and I was the only candidate sitting in the front row. He knew exactly when that meeting was, it was on Halloween at 4:30. His best answer for everything is, "I don't know, I don't know." Anyhow, let me tell you what the boneheaded thing he said was in that meeting. We all get in there, I didn't know what the meeting was about. I was, I thought that was on a Wednesday or Thursday. It was on Halloween, I know that, I think I got the call on Monday evening or Tuesday. I can't remember which, it was a while back. Anyhow, I get there, it's at 4:30 of course, you know, day shift working class, they made it so we could attend. I guess we have some double standards, we're allowed to know certain things, and not be part of other certain things. Who knows, maybe they should do like a list, and categorize everything, what the day shift working class is allowed to know about, and not know about, and sweep under the rug. I don't know, anyhow, in this meeting, I sat in the front row, you know? I figured, well, I'm gonna be a leader, or I'm trying to be a leader, I just will sit in the front row. I mean, that's what leaders do. So I was the only candidate sitting in the front row. So we're sitting there, prosecuting attorney walks in, John Ayers, and he sits down, Commissioner Swick's there, and a few other people around the big table. Candidates, the rest of the candidates, sitting behind me. And John Ayers starts explaining to us what happened. He said, "The first day, and part of the second day, the ballots wasn't being signed. So according to law, these ballots had to be locked up in a box. Nobody could count them, nobody could see them, they had to be locked up, locked key, the whole nine yards, and could not be looked at until the following Tuesday." It was either 12:30 or 1:30, I can't remember. And he explained the law and everything, this is the law. Doug Swick looks at him, I can't remember his exact words, but it went a little something like this. "I think we can find a way around it." John Ayers looked at him and said, "We have to follow the law." I walked out of that meeting, asking myself, "What in the hell am I trying to get myself into?" The prosecutor attorney sat there and explained the law, it was so easy, a five-year-old could understand it. They called it a goof, I don't know exactly what happened, what caused all that. Somebody wasn't doing their job, or somebody goofed, I don't know. But the law is the law, and you have to obey it. You don't go try to find a way around it, especially in an election. That's very serious. That there just told me that something fishy's going on, I don't trust the elections. I never trusted them before that meeting, and after that meeting, I really don't trust them. I'm not saying that this election was rigged, the reason I lost, I'm not saying that. I don't trust them people. Moving on. I strongly encourage everybody to go to the Grant County, West Virginia Observer on Facebook, and just read this stuff. There's no, I'm not doubting Jill's abilities, but there's no way she could make this stuff up. There's no way anybody could make this stuff up. Hollywood can make a killing off of this, if they come in and start doing a study, and following people and stuff like that, they could make one hell of a TV series out of this. April 23rd. "The meeting was called to order by Jeff Byrd." I wonder how they got him to do that? He reminds me of Burning Lomax off of Weekend at Bernie's. We never hear a peep out of him, I often think that they just set a corpse in there. And in my opinion, he was voted in to be a filler. Take up a spot until the Grant County elite, I still think we're ruled by secrecy, that's just my opinion. But he's put in there till the Grant County elite can find somebody to fill that spot, that'll do something. But he was put in as a filler, that's just my opinion. Never hear a peep out of him. They start calling him Burning Lomax Jeff. Anyhow, he called the meeting to order, he announced that Doug Swick was not able to be there. "Mr. Swick is an assistant softball coach, there was a game in Cumberland." Okay, this guy's making 39 grand a year, almost 40 grand a year. He's supposed to be there to serve the people, and he's at a ballgame. That there's not good. Says here he's paid 42,500. I don't know if that's accurate, because when I contacted him, it was 39,000 and something. Maybe they got a raise, I didn't hear about it. Or maybe one of us got the wrong information, I contacted Harold Isner before he passed, but... Regardless which it is, that's a lot of money to get paid, that's more than what I make a year. At a ballgame, ain't that something? But my professionalism's horrendous. Moving on. Get to pick on Commissioner Miley a little bit. "When I came on to commission, I felt like when I was running for office, weren't handled the best way towards me, but at the end of the day, for me to move forward, and for me to put Grant County first, in my mind, I had to draw a line in the sand. And I said for me to move forward as a commissioner, to represent Jill, you, Michelle, my family, everybody in the community, I had to put, I had to draw a line in the sand to start moving forward. I think there are ways for us to work together, to help alleviate situations like this, I truly do. But to do that, I had to draw a line in the sand. I can't dwell on things in the past. I have to move forward so we can do this better." Alright, let's say a person, or persons, goes to the, let's say Summit Bank, and they rob it. Steal a bunch of money, and they get away. Sheriff's doing everything he can to apprehend these criminals. Doing old detective work, questioning, you know, police stuff. Let's say it's an election year. Well, the election comes, and the sheriff's still haven't caught these people, and his term's up, or he didn't rerun, or whatever, anyhow, we get a new sheriff. New sheriff gets in there and says, "Well, I don't want to dwell on the past. I want to move forward. I don't like the fact that the bank was robbed, but I gotta draw a line in the sand and move forward. And don't bother trying to apprehend these criminals." What would that do to the morale of the people? It wouldn't be good. Scotty's the new commissioner, it's his duty to investigate any wrongdoings, past, present, or future. I know he wants to be friends with everybody, and he don't want to dig up any dirt that's going to expose any of his buddies that helped him get in there, but that's his duty. And I'm not trying to take jabs, I'm just stating the facts. When you're in politics, you don't have friends. When you're in business, you don't have friends. You've got to do things by the book, and you can't kiss anybody's ass. And he needs to dig up some of this stuff that's been done in the past, where the law has been broken, because we, the taxpayers, are still paying for this. If they get sued, like they're being sued now, something to the Freedom of Information Act, I haven't researched the whole thing, see what all's going on, but that's costing us money. That needs to be dealt with. The open meetings law, they broke umpteen number at times, gotten by with it. What does that do to the morale of the people? We're paying for this stuff. He, as a commissioner, has a duty to investigate any wrongdoings, whether it's past, present, or future. Get it done. Don't draw lines in the sand, you sound like a Freemason talking. They use words like that, hoodwinked, and, yeah, I know all about that. Won't get into that, because I know how upset they get, they... "Picking on me mommy." Fuckers. It's okay for them to pucker their butthole and shit on somebody, if somebody says something about it, they start whining, can't handle it. Double standards, more double standards, this world's full of double standards. Moving on. I like to pick it on old Dougie Pooh. This was on May 14th. Talking about putting stuff online, and I'm all for that. They need to put more information online about what's going on in this county. I'll give you an experience I had. I wanted to get my business license, do some taxidermy work, so I go to the state's website, I think it was... Online Business, West Virginia, something, I can't remember the name of the site. Anyhow, you get on there, you create an account, and you fill out all your information to apply for your license, you don't have to do it all at one time, you can save it and come back and do it later, you know, if you have a question, or you need to look something up, or you're not prepared to answer that question just yet, you know? Go down through there, it's an eight-step process, 1 through 8. Actually, it's pretty nice, I like it, worked for me. Cost me 130 bucks, I think, but... If they get sued like they're being sued now, something to the Freedom of Information Act, I haven't researched the whole thing, see what all's going on, but that's costing us money. That needs to be dealt with. The open meetings law, they broke umpteen number at times, gotten by with it, what does that do to the morale of the people? We're paying for this stuff. He, as a commissioner, has a duty to investigate any wrongdoings, whether it's past, present, or future. Get it done. Don't draw lines in the sand, you sound like a Freemason talking. They use words like that, hoodwinked, and yeah, I know all about that. Won't get into that, because I know how upset they get, they "Picking on me mommy." Fuckers. It's okay for them to pucker their butthole and shit on somebody, if somebody says something about it, they start whining, can't handle it, double standards, more double standards, this world's full of double standards. Moving on. Like to picking on old Dougie Pooh. This was on May 14th. Talking about putting stuff online and I'm all for that, they need to put more information online about what's going on in this county, I give an experience I had. I wanted to get my business license, do some taxidermy work, so I go to the state's website, I think it was Online Business West Virginia, something, I can't remember the name of this site, anyhow. You get on there, you create an account and you fill out all your information to apply for your license, you don't have to do it all at one time, you can save it and come back and do it later, you know, if you have a question or you need to look something up, or you're not prepared to answer that question just yet, you know. Go down through there, it's an eight-step process, one through eight. Actually, it's pretty nice, I like it. Worked for me. Cost me a hundred and thirty bucks, I think, but that's how it is, anyhow. Damn. Anyhow, I get down about seven or eight. That's when you contact your local government, see if they have anything that needs to be done, filed, whatever. And I think it was number seven, you gotta contact the county clerk. I figured, well, we are in the 21st century. Email's been around a long time, been a little while. I'll send Bud Fisher an email. Asking him what all I need on the local level. Why I needed his email address. So I figured, well, I'll go to the Grant County website, simple. I get on there and I click on there, county clerk. Scroll down. He's got his phone number and fax number, no email. I thought, well, Jesus Christ, man. How in the world, is anybody supposed to open up business in Grant County? There's no information on their site, you can't get an email how to contact these people. That's when I got the idea, well, I'll email the county commissioners about this issue. So I clicked over on the county commissioners, phone number, fax number, no email. Bad enough, I can't go to the meetings because I work day shift. I can't even, I can't send them an email? Give me a break. So I go to the Secretary of State's website, I figured I'll go through that, maybe Bud Fisher's email's on there, so that's where I went and I got his email. I emailed him, he emailed me back, I assume everything's in order. No, if they can come give me a fine, I don't care. Anyhow, that's what this, this meeting's about, putting stuff online, you know, to help people out, more information, you know, I think it'd be real good to help out the businesses. Anyhow, Jill Long says, "It would be helpful, people of this county want to know what is going on." Commissioner Swick, what people? What people are you talking about? Now, either he's a full-blown idiot, or he's just being an ass. That goes to show how serious he takes the people of Grant County. Not serious at all, I have no respect for this guy. None. Goes on here. Jill Long, "The citizens of this county." Commissioner Swick, "I don't have a lot of citizens questioning me about that stuff. Maybe they're just questioning you about that kind of stuff." Well, how can anybody ask Doug this stuff if they can't get to him, can't even email him? I mean, come on, this guy's ruling us by secrecy. Then Jill Long goes on to say, "They want to be more informed." And they do, I want to be more informed. There's a lot of others want to be more informed. Commissioner Swick, "The citizens, are you representing all the citizens of Grant County? Because I don't have people asking me." He goes on to say, "I have never had anybody asking me." Which is probably bullcrap. Probably another lie, I'm sure somewhat, somewhere along the line, somebody's probably questioning you about it. But, you know, in my opinion, they do need to step up in the 21st century and get with the times, I mean, we're behind, Grant County's behind on everything. I mean, I can go online and renew my registration on my vehicle. I think that's convenient, don't have to go into the DMV. That's one place I try to avoid like the plague. But Grant County, they just don't get it. There's people where, they probably do get it, they just don't care, they want, they want the power and the control, knowledge is power. They want to do this to everybody. Keep you smudged down, the old thumb down. They don't want you to know what's going on. They want you just smart enough, you get up and go to work every day and pay your taxes and just dumb enough to accept your situation and not question anything. That's what they want. And Commissioner Swick is not qualified to be a commissioner at all. If he's gonna be using the excuse that he's a mechanic when he screws up, that there's just bullshit. I have no respect for that man. None at all. And Jeff Byrd, he, he needs to step up the plate. Scotty, I just don't know how that's gonna pan out. He tries to be friends with everybody. And that's not a good idea. I understand you gotta get along, but he's gonna have to realize there's some dirty people in there and he's gonna have to get his hands dirty if he plans on turning anything around, he can't just ignore all that bad stuff and the lies and the deception and the crookedness and sweep it under the rug and move on. It doesn't work that way, there's people that pay taxes that want answers. We want to see results. If someone breaks the law, they need to be held accountable, don't just, oh, we're starting over, the clean slate, put all that in the past, let's move forward, uh-uh. That don't fly with me, especially when some of them people still drawing a salary. I just don't like that. Moving on. Siren test. I'm gonna get into this more in another episode, but for right now, I'm just gonna say there's a lot of bad things happening in this world, if you've been watching the news, paying attention, a lot of people don't even know that tornadoes and floods are wreaking havoc across the country. But some people are too busy watching The Bachelor or some bullcrap show that throw them out to the hill of beans. You know, whether you believe it's global warming, climate change, the end of the world, Planet X coming, whatever it may be, it's obvious to me, things are escalating and they're getting pretty bad. I think there was like over 500 tornadoes reported in like thirty-day period, if I remember correctly. Then the flooding out west, that's unreal, that's gonna affect our food prices. And a lot of people, if they're not thinking of stocking up, they should consider stocking up, buying now while price is down. But these siren tests, there needs to be an improvement in our emergency planning in Grant County, I'm not saying anyone's doing a bad job. I'm not pointing a finger at anybody. I have a lot of respect for the emergency personnel, that they're doing a job that I couldn't do. I think they do a really good job, but there's always room for improvement and things are changing and we need to change with the times. We need to get everybody informed, get a game plan down. Is it gonna be perfect every time something happens? No. But we can at least put forth an effort to try to ease our suffering as much as possible. That's all I'm gonna say about that. I'll do another one, another show on emergency preparedness, I'll talk more about these siren tests. That's about all I have for today's show. Thanks for watching. Till next time. Stay safe and be careful out there, will you?